Wow.
What about the?
You got your seven o'clock.
About, um, then, since it's seven o'clock, let's call the Planning Commission meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Parnell Vermont Planning Commission. And, um, tonight, our, uh, our agenda, if approved, um, will be regarding approval of this agenda, of course, approval of the minutes of our meeting on July seventeenth. Hey, there's our newest member. Um, we're gonna talk about the minutes from, uh, June nineteenth, if we have a copy of them. If not, we'll figure it out. Um, my guest tonight, an consultant, is Michael Thatcher from the B C R C. He's gonna lead a discussion on village designation on our energy section. We're also gonna talk about deadline approaching for municipal planning grants. Uh, added to that, although she doesn't appear by name, Barbara will discuss the work she's been doing on the fourteen points required by the, by the town, or by the state and, uh, the B C R C to advance our, uh, energy section. Or required by the po- required by, by Michael Thatcher.
Michael.
Not required.
Yeah. We'll briefly look at the mail and we'll be open to public comment, if there is any. And, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve that agenda. Fred moved.
Second.
Who has a second? Michelle seconded. Any further discussion on the agenda? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Um, I'm gonna, I think you know everybody, but I'm gonna introduce you in a second here anyway. I just wanna get through the, uh, the approval of the regular meeting minutes from July seventeenth. They're in your packet, if you haven't seen them online. Everybody can take a quick look, we do have a forum meeting, we can actually pass these. And not put them in the stack with about the twelve other ones that we can. Do you have a copy of the, uh, June nineteenth?
They, yeah, I guess you.
Let's take a look and see what's.
They should've been everybody's.
So it's not here, but Fred, Shannon, Shannon, Michelle, and Barbara are here, so we can vote on notice as well.
I just had, had one question.
Yeah.
On the, um, oh, where we, we agreed that the mobile home parks should remain within the village boundaries because they include walkover areas and potential business sites. I just don't remember the.
Like the reason?
The potential business sites.
Um, well, we talked about how Circle of Life was there in the.
Oh, for there, yeah.
And then there was some kind of discussion with the.
About, about this, the mobile home parks.
Yeah.
And so selling mobile homes?
No, it was more like if everyone, the, if the Altec Garden owner wanted to do a lawning mat.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Like, then that would benefit him to be.
Okay.
So it was like that.
Okay, regarding the July seventeenth, uh, minutes, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, um, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, and I think, uh, yeah, I was there, so I can say aye, sorry. Uh, any, any opposed? Not, motion carries. Thank you. Um, Mr. Walker is making copies of the June nineteenth, I don't think we all have it in our packets. And so while he's.
I think most people do though.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't.
I got two July seventeenth.
July?
Yeah. July nineteenth.
All right, so how many do we need? Cause I got Michael slaving away over there.
I just, I need.
We, so we need only a couple, I guess.
You're saying the nineteenth, that's the seventeenth?
So that's the July.
We didn't.
That's the one we just did. So now we're looking for June nineteenth because we didn't have a quorum, uh, that would've enabled us to, to approve these minutes. And so, uh, uh, Megan Randall is our newest, uh, is our newest member, um, welcome, by the way. You know, you've, uh, you've been a big supporter of this town and, uh, you've done a lot of work, uh, behind the scenes as well as on the front lines. And it's a pleasure to have you here.
Pleasure to be here.
We'll teach you the secret handshake and give you all that stuff later. You can't do that on camera, so.
Big learning curve for that.
Yours big, a big learning curve, oh yeah. It's like the old raccoon club, trying to do a handshake and. All right, um, is everybody, I don't have a copy of them yet, so if we can wait just a second, we'll do that. We'll, we'll approve that. It'd be nice to have two sets approved. Oh, yeah, why don't we go around and introduce ourselves? I'm sorry, I just thought Megan knew everyone, you know Shannon?
I know Barbara, I know you.
Yeah, okay. And you know, you know Michael, you know Michelle, Mr. Winchester.
Michelle.
You guys must've met at some point. Uh, you know Ronnie? Ronnie Bizan. Fred Miller.
Hi.
So now, if you're up to date, and that's Michael Walker, who's.
Stakers.
Who's, who's our new assistant.
New secretary.
To the Planning Commission.
We've gotta have a role.
Just long as you're in there somewhere, huh, Michael?
Yeah, why not?
Is that it?
Way to the, working my way to the top.
Yes, you are.
Going in for the promotion, thank you, Michael.
All right.
Did you, you guys have, uh, June nineteenth?
I need.
And I know.
You got them, Ronnie?
I don't need it, I can't vote.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
I'm just an observer.
The ex officio.
Nah, just an observer, that's a select.
Well, this is one that I have. Oh, let's make sure we do have enough, we have one, two, three, four, five, yes, there are five. Except that ten's not being. Hmm, not yet, no. You'd, you would've had to have been there, but you can comment on it, like if there are mistakes and things, you can point that out.
I would've been.
You just can't vote, that's all. Or you can abstain. You'll have your first abstention.
She wasn't English teacher.
She was.
Watch out.
Is, is. They never quit.
It's true, once an English teacher.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the Tuesday, June nineteenth?
So moved.
Regular meetings, I have a motion here, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Michelle. Um, any further discussion on these or dramatical errors, if you'd like to correct?
Finding them, so sorry.
If none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And I'll abstain. And Megan will abstain. And, uh, and, and any opposed? If none, the motion carries. Very good.
So much agreement.
Hmm.
It's a relief, isn't it?
Okay, let's, um, let's turn it over to Michael. Um, Michael and I have had a few conversations in the last few weeks when I've been in town and, uh, we need to be a little more succinct in the energy section, I know, but you probably wanna talk a little bit about village designation first.
Well, yeah, we, we can start with village designation, of which I just found a boatload of errors on the map. So that's kinda what I was hoping people would take a look at, because I'm a terrible proofreader. But Shannon just pointed out one to me about misnaming a building. And then, and there's one of them didn't have the historic district on it. Another one didn't have a photograph named, labeled properly, so I gotta fix those.
What photo?
And anything anybody else finds when they review the map?
Yes, that's what I really appreciate, cause like I said, I, you know, when I make these things, I'm looking at a screen, I don't print them out because I'm trying to save paper and, um, I'm a terrible, and unfortunately, Arc J S, which is what I use for this, doesn't have a, there is a spell checker if I wanna spend seven hundred dollars to buy it. So I have to.
Oh, wow.
You guys are cheaper of your own money.
Well, and there is a deadline in that Michael addressed the letter for the Select Board to sign for next Thursday, is that right?
Thirtieth. Oh, this won't take me more than an hour.
Well, no, I just mean if anybody wants to look at it and comment.
It would be really helpful.
So you need us to look again at the maps and the attachment that you sent us.
Like I said, I think. That photograph's a little dark.
Oh.
The school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you can get out there.
Right.
On a Sunday day.
So number one, new school picture.
I mean, you wanna make the village look as great as it possibly can.
Well, that just shows we need lighting in that area.
We're gonna have a photo shop.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can do that.
Yeah.
Might be able to lighten that up, right? I don't know.
Yeah, usually.
Number two, you need us to review the maps again.
Let's see, there's, do you have these, have photo numbers?
To check theirs.
So that's because the label is covering that one of the blue things.
So are we looking at the last set of maps that you sent us?
Yeah, and I, I hope these match the boundaries you all came up with, like, maybe shifted things a little bit. Cause I like to follow property boundaries, so everybody follows property boundaries. Sort of doesn't make sense because, um.
Right.
A road is a property line and therefore there's.
And split, so, yeah.
So.
So they prefer it, or they will correct us and say, keep these to, to boundaries, to property.
Well, we, I've already done that, but it just.
You have.
When you think about it, it's like, um, when you're trying to designate an area which includes a road and if you take the road out because it's not the property line, then you have, you have things separated because of the road right away.
Sure. So we.
It just seemed a little weird to me, but we're trying to get you designated, Tom.
No, I, I understand. So, uh, in our last meeting, when we went over the maps, you were okay with that, you were clear on, on all of that, right?
Yeah, just make sure I got your boundaries correct, so I'm pretty sure I did.
Okay, all right. So if we could all take a look at those again and get back to them.
Yeah, whenever you mind.
As soon as we could.
You know, that would be great. Yeah, cause it's, it's not, it's not that much work to do that, but.
And who's our resident photographer on the Planning Commission? Take another picture, that's cool.
I can do it, I can do it. I'll wait till, hopefully there's this, I don't think tomorrow's is.
No, tomorrow's was great.
Yeah. Was that the only one?
Would you take it with?
It's real dark like that? With my iPhone.
Let's see.
I'm surprised, the new iPhones are all dark.
They're pretty.
It's actually, no.
No, that's true.
It's not.
Got the four, the three, that's a little dark.
That one is that? Oh, that's by the library, yeah, okay.
Well, you might wanna, you might wanna.
They're better angled.
Well, I would go stand with a truck, just take a picture of the church, cause otherwise it looks like you're.
Yeah, okay.
Really like this truck, Shannon. I mean.
I know, my, is my truck in all the pictures?
Is that your truck? Yeah.
Yeah.
I used to have a Volkswagen Rabbit, there wasn't a lot of.
It is a nice truck.
I had a, I had a, I was working at a site one time where I parked my Volkswagen just for the effect, because in the spring, where my Volkswagen was, was under eight feet of water. And that's where my canoe was, so I wanted to show people that's how much high, this is on Lake Champlain, how.
Yeah.
The water changes from summer to winter.
I guess it does.
I was trying to get the library and the church in the same picture, but that's hard to do.
And the, and the kind of rural character of, panel of pickup trucks, and yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so library, or what, what if the king names, can we do individual pictures of the?
This is a little dark.
Library and church?
And just pick stitch them together?
Yeah.
Shannon, did you hear Michelle's question?
Can we take a picture of the library by itself and the church by itself and then just do pick, pick stitch? I mean, I can do that on my phone, put those two together.
Pick stitch.
Sure. It's how I do with my pets.
That's amazing.
Send grandma pictures.
Just, just if you change the angle where you took it from.
Is that, um.
Cause each arrow is basically showing which way the photos take.
Is this right one?
That's fine.
This is a special app or is it in the shadow?
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
So just as an overall update, Michael, we have everything else, right? The narrative is done, the letter, do you need a letter from me, or did, did somebody sign something from you?
Visual letter, narrative visual letters, I think you're signing that.
Okay. Um, and then I, I know, Michael, you, uh, you led the charge with the Select Board, right?
Yeah, thirtieth, I have the resolution ready for them, it's on the agenda.
Excellent.
So you should sign that letter tonight, then, so.
It says, letters in the package.
Okay, if you wanna figure out a way to print it.
Now, are they okay with it, by the way? Have they looked at stuff?
He already did print it.
Yeah.
Nelson has.
Michael's got the whole.
I'm not sure about the, I haven't heard from the rest of it.
He was okay?
No.
No, he had a couple of questions and I wanted him to talk directly to you rather than.
About the maps?
Okay.
And the, and the racetrack?
Yeah, the racetrack was the question.
So, so just.
The racetrack, I understood, he, he was.
That appeared in the village, in our village boundary, the racetrack?
In the, in the village's bylaws, it's zoned village. In the town plan, we changed it to commercial slash industrial. So when he saw that, he thought we should show it as what it's, as what, as commercial slash industrial. And I said, no, they want a zoning map, you haven't changed the zoning yet.
That's right.
And he responded back to it saying, okay, I got you, and I think he just was.
So he's okay with that?
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with our application for designations?
Right, he just wanted.
Okay, cause that's what I thought.
Getting things mixed up, but I don't know if there's any other things he had. Yeah, was there something else, Jim, that he had? All I knew about was the racetrack.
Well, he was talking about a couple of things, that, our designation for it, but I thought he would get, get in touch with you. Uh, I just spoke to him the night of the election.
So he'll give me a call?
Yes.
I saw him outside the polling.
Yeah.
And, um, I thought he was confusing those two issues.
He was.
The village designation and then, because I said to him, we haven't changed our zoning yet, we're just getting the plans done and, you know, we've gotta get the village designation done, and we gotta get the energy section redone, and then we're off and running on, on bylaws.
I thought he might show up, you know, he was concerned about.
Yeah.
Okay.
He, he, he's about the zoning thing, he sent me back saying that he was fine with that.
Okay.
To be honest, actually, I think it strengthens your application to have it shown as a village. Since you've zoned it all village, then you're trying to get village designation, you're trying to say that this is the village center as opposed to, oh, it's a commercial slash industrial. And you may not make that change, even for some reason, you may go to the bylaws and go, eh, we don't want to.
Yeah, absolutely, that's right. Um, I hate to have the conflict between the town plan and, and the bylaws exist. I've, I've seen that backfire before, so you want it to rhyme as much as possible.
I mean, conceivably, you could change the bylaw with respect to the village zone without changing the map, but, you know, it would depend on how you wanna deal with it.
Well, and we'll get to that, but there is no industrial slash commercial.
No, you don't even have a zone that says that.
Yeah, that's right, so, you know, the, the goal there is to stop, since it's in the floodplain, is to stop any, uh, housing from being built there.
Right.
Or put there.
I think it was also.
That's why we wanted it, we talked about changing that, and Nelson was part of that discussion.
Yeah, and it's supporting what you have existing like canal, which is more of a industrial use.
Exactly, sure, sure. All right, so then we're ready to go, and Michael, you have a letter, you have a letter for me to sign tonight? Shannon said you have it with you?
Should be in the package, right? It's in the package, yeah.
Oh, okay. Be glad to do it right now, if, um.
You can look at one now.
Make sure it's spoken in English.
I love it, something that, I think this one's more of an in progress.
Yeah.
It should be in here, huh? No, none on the Select Board. Michael Slav.
Yeah, y'all, that's just one of those. Okay, you'll try to hit both of them. Actually, we're out there looking at it too, that's a little hard, you can't both of them.
Yeah, you can't.
Cause if I'm out, I can be turned out, but she's such a non-maligned favorite.
All right, that's signed, Michael. Shannon? Okay, anything else on village designation?
I don't think so.
I think we're moving along there, huh? I think once it's, uh, established, we have to talk some more, if we go back to my old implementation, you know, the thing that I had, it's like two hundred pages at the end of the hundred and eighty page town plan. Um, I think we talked about somebody kind of running with this, uh, being a point person on the Planning Commission. So as to really be able to go and explain these, the advantages to businesses that fall in these areas, because, uh, you know, when Richard Moore was here two years ago, I mean, I, I took ten pages of notes as to things that, I, I know you got excited about it, and.
He also said that they could bring somebody down here, like once the designation is established.
Yeah.
That they could do a meeting of the interested business.
And, and we could advertise that meeting, we could reach out to people that we think it would, it could help, so that they know it's there. Because we had one, we, we had village designations before, uh, I knew little about them. I don't know, I think Nelson may have been the only one who really understood them and really pushed them, uh, when he had time, with all the hats they wears, but, so. So just keep that in the back of your mind when it's done, we'll, we've got to, we just can't go to sleep on it, once we get it.
Yeah, let's keep it.
Yeah. All right. Shall we move on to energy and, uh, let Barbara first speak about her fourteen?
You want to go first, you want me to go first? Cause I thought what I'd do is just go through it and make sure we're all on the same page, cause back in, so we had a big, long meeting in May where we went over a lot of these, um, thoughts, and then, and I got various, and somebody changes, suggested Michelle sent me some changes I tried to incorporate, and so, let me.
And Fred too, and we should give him a, a few minutes if he wants to talk about some of that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But let me just tell you, so, subsequent to making these changes, I talked to somebody at the P U C with, with respect to, um, preferred sites. And I did not add the results of that conversation to this, so I can talk about that, but there's still some changes, I think, that, you know, I just basically said, I'm sorry, here, back for you on this stuff. And I have a map I wanna talk about preferred sites again, too. So, do you guys all have this somewhere, or?
Yeah.
Or we just?
Do you wanna talk about the energy plan?
Yes, that's why I was just gonna go over it real quick.
In your last.
In terms of the major changes I made, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I have it in my bag.
So one change I made was to, um, take out certain language about the Vermont energy policy that I had put in and basically then track the, the language in the legislation.
Thanks.
The whole point of it is, rather than interpret anything, just say it, okay? And, um, so that's what part of that first section does. It tracks all of the changes that they made to the various Vermont statutes when they, um, passed Act one, which is what, in essence, what was tackled on seventy-four. So that's, it's always, that's always an interesting thing, the legislature will pass an act and we'll call it, like, one I deal with a lot is the Solways Act. Act one forty-eight, everybody's, oh, one forty-eight, one forty-eight, but if you actually look where the changes are, they are all over the place, there's no one place that'll change. They change very many, many, many different places, so you have to go look for them. And so calling something one seventy-four is kind of irrelevant, cause there's probably been about three or four Act one seventy-four since then.
Yep.
Okay. So then, I think, yeah, I got some comments from Sid that there were a couple misplaced references. And I put a footnote, I think this was something Fred had talked about, you just say, you can adopt an ordinance requiring screening.
Mm-hmm.
And they should do that, so I made, made that as a, as a, as a note.
What is that again?
That's on.
Solar and.
Screening for solar.
Okay, for solar. Okay, so then much of the rest of this is changed and, and is, is unchanged. And just to be clear, there's this whole set of long tables that Jim Sullivan put together that had to do, that indicate energy use and demand over a period of time for different sectors. Residential, transportation, and like, and those are all targets that the state is asking you to meet, okay? They're asking all the towns to meet if, 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 if you want to have an enhanced energy plan. If you don't wanna have an enhanced energy plan, you don't have any of this stuff. But if you wanna do that, then, then you have to put, put these targets in there, cause they're basically saying, we're gonna move from lots and lots of gas to very little gas and some electricity to lots of electricity. They're basically turning, they wanna turn the economy to an electricity economy by twenty fifty. And it, and that's the primary energy source. So, all of those tables that cover that are, are not changed, because they're basically your targets.
Yeah.
Okay?
If you don't need a target?
Well, that, how this ultimately, how the rubber actually, this piece of road is kind of an interesting question, cause you only have so much ability to do anything, which is why.
Right.
There's so many uses of the word encouraged.
Encouraged, that's right.
Because you can't, you can't like say, you will buy an electric car.
You will buy an electric car.
Yeah, cause you can't.
Yeah.
You don't, you can't, you can't even like decide, determine what's sold in, in, in town, but you can go, go talk to people. I mean, I think, um, actually Jim Sullivan told me, he went to talk to a dealer about, about an electric car, and they didn't know anything about them, so giving them some information is, you know.
A lot of dealers are doing away with it.
Um, so then we had discussions about sizes of wind towers and sizes of solar farms. So again, I looked, I looked this up, I pulled it out of the various, you have to really search the public service utility stuff to find this. So I actually came up with the, the heights of residential, commercial, and utility, and the lower, and wind speeds in which they are functional, okay? And I put, created a table of that, did the same thing for solar, which looked at sizes, and I made the distinction between net metering, which is when you can sell power back
Right.
to the grid versus what's called standard offer plan, which, um, and I should tell you, this is not something I'm, I'm deeply familiar with, but it's basically a program to encourage big scale solar. There's an, there's an incentive program. So then, the guidelines that the P U C put together identify constraints on the citing of these kinds of resources. And there are two kinds of constraints, and many of these are addressed in other parts of your plans, especially in the natural resource section. So for instance, FEMA floodways, there's a section in their plan that deals with flood hazard zones and describes what a floodway is in a lot. Now, so, so what I did was I, I indicated what these constraints are and where they're, where the maps that indicate what they are, are, because they wanna know that you have maps of all of these things.
That I know of.
Now, now, one of the mind boggling things about these constraints, I mean, I'm gonna use this as a good example. A known constraint is something that someone who went out and evaluated and determined it's there. A potential constraint is something that might be there. Now, FEMA floodways were identified by FEMA when they redid the flood maps in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. That's a known constraint. A possible constraint is a FEMA special flood hazard area, a hundred year flood. They did the same study. Came from the same source, so it's already been studied. And, um.
Potential constraint.
So, it doesn't, and protected lands, we know where the protected land's at. So there's a little, it's just they, how they did it, I don't know why they did it that way, but, and, and I'm not criticizing, I, I know some of these are, for instance, um, uh, you know, hard to, hard to determine where they are. Class one and two wetlands, for instance, I mean, there are maps of class one and two wetlands, but they're not exactly super accurate. They come, they come from what's called the National Wetlands in Victoria that goes back to the sixties and seventies and eighties mapping. The only way you figure out what a wetland is, you go out in the ground, and that's it. And, and nobody's gonna do that for all of town, so, but that's a known constraint. So, I'm basically describing all of these, because later on, we're trying to make the point that you are gonna use both sets. You're making the determination.
Success and potential.
Yeah, I, I mean, because, um, you're determining that those are important resources and therefore for citing criteria, you do not want them tread upon, okay?
They're basically environmentally sensitive areas.
Yes, yeah, they're all, now, you can add others, um, but we have, I did it.
But I can play like ridges, or, I don't know.
We could do steep slopes, or we could do historic areas, or things like that. You know, we'd have to work that out. Um, I think there's two things that we didn't need to think of, that could be a lot of work, we could do that. The other thing is that if you're not gonna allow a wind tower there, you can allow anything else there.
Right, that's a big part of the enhanced plan, isn't it?
Yeah.
You can't just say no to a wind tower.
Yeah, where you can decide, you're not gonna allow housing developments in, on, on protected lands. I mean, that's kind of illogical, that's why they're protected.
Sure.
So, you're being consistent, in other words, you need to be consistent.
And we need to reflect that, there has to be some language, right?
Yes.
That, that says.
And, which is another reason, I'm pretty sure that's in here, but you, and, and both of you have told me, you think there needs to be strengthening, so tell me where, tell me where anything needs to be clarified, cause this is not exactly real simple.
Hmm, it's already done.[1788.02]
You got the racetracks and the flood zone, you got, you got Fred's is built there, it looks like it's on a wave. It was built in the wintertime, you had a crew from Florida come in there, put up nightlights. Uh, it is a mess, and yet it exists today. So some of the things you're talking about, the line door's been opened. It's already done.
So we know those are existing.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
How did we allow it?
Well.
We didn't have a town for jobs, but it's something that.
Well, I don't know, it's our town, how did it all get here?
Well, laws have changed over time.
I did love.
And, and. Want me to tell you something about flood zone mapping?
People are paying attention.
It'll make your hair shake.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so then. The next mapping standard has to do with preferred locations. Which is what we have been talking about quite a bit for solar. So rather than try to bob and weave on this, I basically went again to the PUC documentation and listed what a preferred, what kinds of things are preferred sites. Cause some sites are preferred by definition. Like the brownfield.
Right.
Okay? And, there were a couple here, I, I hadn't even known it, cause I actually looked at the regional energy plan and a lot of this stuff wasn't listed, it wasn't listed as clearly, so I basically. My, my guideline with planning is anybody should be able to pick this up and understand as opposed to, yeah, go to someplace else to go find it. So I listed all the possible preferred sites. Okay? And, so I'm gonna take a little, little aside here, cause I've learned something since then, that I did not think that. So a brownfield is an area that has some contamination that can be remediated. Okay? And actually didn't, you have. Three brownfields that are listed. One is, one is the tannery.
Mm-hmm.
One is a house on Center Street that I think is partially wetland. It's like a half an acre, and then there's a third one on blocking, oh. But then it turns out, I talked to Jim Henderson, who's our brownfield expert, that Mack Molding is a brownfield.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I didn't, didn't know, okay? So they're, they're.
Recently declared brownfield?
No, back to two thousand and four, two thousand and five, but it doesn't show up in the state database. At any rate, they're, they're actually a preferred site for two reasons, one, cause they're a brownfield, and two, because any building that was not built for the purpose of housing energy. Can be a preferred site, so you have, basically you have a big roof.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is, so.
So that fits the bill in.
Yep.
Two different ways.
So the water department built it well next to it. And we got PUCs and we got a lot of problems with it.
Yeah, well, the other interesting thing is that the. Town transfer station has two landfills. One is capped and one is not capped, and we recently did a brownfield study for the uncapped landfill because Green Lantern wanted to put.
Mm-hmm.
Solar, and that would give them additional credits, given them.
By going to that.
Yep. So what I'm told is that. Bad things were found there. And what's necessary, necessary to do is do what's called a phase two study. Now, we have funding to do phase one studies because we're trying to remediate, we're trying to, we're trying to promote fixing brownfields, cause, so they can be used.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we don't have the money to do a phase two study, and I think Green Lantern withdrew. So I don't know what's gonna happen with that, it's still a preferred site by definition, but until someone decides.
So they would have to pony up for the phase two study.
Or the town.
There's no, the, the state won't come in and do a phase two study.
Nobody's gonna do it for free.
Nobody.
Sorry.
I mean, we're talking fifty, sixty thousand dollars.
What is a phase two study?
A phase, so a phase one study is basically a record search. You look at deeds, you look at past land uses, you may interview people and the like. And it's, it's actually, we once did a phase one study for a project, I was working on it, we get a report like that, I mean, cause you get all the past records, deeds, everything else. Um. Phase two study, you go out and dig holes and you test, test things, and that's expensive.
Sure, and you take the boring samples.
Yeah.
Some of what they've discovered phase one is making them go, oh, we gotta look at phase two.
Some of which aren't, aren't boring, some of which are really.
Yeah, 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 oh, they put that there?
Right.
Yeah, so the state like wants more test wells at the landfill and like, and that's gonna be crazy.
We have a question.
Yeah, I've been working on that. Uh, we've got the detail from the engineering company, Mike's correct, it's a little more than fifty-five thousand dollars, but we have detailed plans of what phase two is going to look like. And I've been discussing with, with Jim.
Yep.
On how those funds are gonna be, where are we gonna get them from?
Right.
So. I'm working on my end, he's working on his end, but that's not my big worry. Phase two, I don't think is gonna be a big surprise, what we can find, it's, what are we gonna have to do after that phase two?
Right.
So I'm looking at the end game, we're talking about possibly having cap that. And I don't know that, uh, the solar company is going to see a, uh, a big payoff. Based on the amount of money it's gonna, it's gonna cost to do that, so. It's kind of a mess.
So even though technically, at least on the onset, it looks like a preferred site, it truly wouldn't be, once the testing's gone for it.
Tannery, the tannery dumped a lot of stuff there.
Yeah, not less.
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Nonetheless.
This is the landfill near the transfer station, not the one down with the sewer treatment plant.
No, 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 they, the tannery dumped that too.
They did, okay, okay.
I'm sure that's what phase one.
Yeah.
Somebody still knows.
So unless someone were to remediate it and then the power, the solar guys came in, but you need to be able to make enough money.
Yeah.
From the solar to pay off the investment.
Well, they have to completely re-engineer it, because they don't know what the surface is.
Right.
They don't have, any of the structures got to completely re-engineer it, so they're, they're behind the eight ball already.
And then I guess, it's not clear how that affects the, what they do on the other landfill? Or have they not withdrawn their application for that?
No, they have withdrawn that.
Okay, so they're still moving ahead.
Yeah, they're still moving ahead with that, in fact, they got the signed agreement and access to that, so.
Okay.
But for our plan. We don't care it's defined as a preferred site.
Yeah, we can listen, yeah.
Yeah, just because it's defined as a preferred site doesn't mean anybody's ever gonna build on it.
Yeah, but I think we should probably.
Pay the fifty grand to.
They'll ever have.
We should probably put a footnote or something in there, this may need further remediation before, I, you know, but then, then for instance, a gravel pit.
You think the PUC would be happy with that?
Well.
If we went to that extent?
Actually, it's gonna. Oh, I, I think they'd be content, I was actually gonna give them a call and just tell them what the situation is and see, see if there's any downside to listing it as a preferred site. Um. But I don't, I think it, it's a brownfield, so it is by nature, and then obviously DECs or A and R's gonna.
There's nothing mining by listing that.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
No.
And it's, and it's by definition.
But a disclaimer wouldn't hurt, I imagine, you know, fire beware.
Well, just an explanation, just an explanation, cause you know, we'll all forget this in six months.
So, so that, that was the two sites at the, by the, by the transfer station.
Yes, the one on the, when you go on the transfer station, one on the right's capped and one on the left is not.
Right.
It doesn't even look like a landfill, it looks like a big field.
I, I believe I heard something about an issue down at, down at the tannery site as well, or the.
Yeah, that's a super.
Water.
Yeah.
Or the, the water treatment site, I heard there was an issue there that was, was discovered.
Well, I thought that was pretty well contained, but I don't know.
That was all done by the government, so I can't see why there'd be any problem there.
ETA did that, right?
I, I just thought, I just thought there was just recently.
That's managed and managed it out.
Director of the agency.
I just thought recently they stumbled on it or something.
No, they don't want no horse poking it.
Oh, okay, alright.
In a sense, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, cause, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, oh, actually, now I do remember.
So back in, in June, uh, in our June meeting, under the discussion in the energy section, it says, Michael will include a generic statement, the panel recognizes the preferred sites that the Public Utility Commission already recognized.
Right, I was gonna put some language in like that.
Okay.
But it's, so, um, the, um. So then we have a table, and that was kind of what I wanted to get a sense from you tonight too, cause I think, um. After learning this about, for instance, Mack Molding, we were gonna take Mack Molding out because they weren't sure what they wanted to do, but I, I think we should, we should put them back in. And I think we should probably, when you get to the public hearing stage, you may want to just send them a public hearing notice.
Let them know that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Please review table thirty on page.
Cause it is, if it is a brownfield, and we would like to see that remediated for lots of reasons. If they could put solar on it, that might be a great thing.
Just cause it's listed, doesn't mean we're putting solar on it, it's just.
Right.
And Mack Molding.
Yeah.
So then.
Do we all agree with that, by the way, to add Mack Molding back in?
Yeah.
I do. It's, it's the rooftop that we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
So it requires nothing from Mack Molding.
No.
For us, for us, the list, listed, it requires no, no response at all from them.
And, and they still have, um, options when it comes to somebody wanting it sold.
If they ever decide to restrict in their case, to have a solar array on the, on the roof.
They want to activate that building, there's nothing right now stopping them, and nothing in the future stopping them.
By listing it as a preferred site. No, Michael, I don't see how it would, would you?
No.
It wouldn't put any restrictions for any other development for their business down there, by being listed in our energy section in our town plan as a preferred site for solar. Would it?
I don't think so, but I'm not an attorney, so. I'll be talking to U C to make sure there's no problem.
Wouldn't hurt.
I don't think we should affect their opportunity to have a business there.
Right.
That's the last thing I want to see.
Wouldn't have any effect on that.
We talked about doing it at school and stuff.
Well, if it affects the price of the, of the building, I mean, that place is for sale.
No, it doesn't affect anything, this is just whether or not they should be preferred or bring solar.
Would you buy it if you saw it? What was listed? If it was a preferred site, sure, it's another option you have.
Yeah.
It's another option.
We could run the whole business and sell that, is that what you're saying?
By listing it, listing it as a, as a brownfield, we already noticed contamination there.
Yeah.
But still and all, if they, if somebody wants to bring a clean industry in there, they're not adding to the contamination. I mean, we can always dream that maybe something.
It was around fifty-one, and then they put together some lights, uh.
Yeah, it'd be cheaper to run their electric off the solar.
There's, there's quite a bit of activity to that.
I got more stuff on. Okay. So you guys love that? So, after learning more about what the preferred sites were. I. Made up another map, so the numbers are sites that we've already identified, and they're listed here. I think there's a couple not in that table, for instance, that, what I was making the distinction between the town landfill, it's capped, not uncapped, they're over in here, and then the highway garage.
Is that the type of?
Hmm?
Type of.
Which one?
Yours, right? Missing your R.
Northwest, yeah, that's how you say it in Vermont, north.
North.
Um.
Drop the R.
Uh.
Yes.
So, these, and I don't think these are correct. These red stars are from a database that indicates where gravel mines are. And the blue is a parcel that has a gravel mine on it. I, I think these are incorrect, but I think maybe adding this as a preferred site, cause that's a big gravel mine, and if there are any others that you think you would like to add. Then that might be.
What is that down there, hearts, campfires?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah. But I need your information, cause I was looking at some of these, and there are some of these like, that are in the woods.
This is, this is a sliding, kind of a sliding slope.
Yeah.
It's like.
Yeah. I don't think it's gonna be ideal for solar setting.
No, nothing will stay there.
Back of the hospital.
Could be down on the road.
Right.
But it's kind of flat up in front.
That's really steep.
It's only got a half a degree of sun.
Oh, man.
The, the front porch will definitely.
Actually, actually, they want a hyper seat.
Couple of hours, maybe, yeah.
Oh, back there.
Yeah, but that, that's an old gravel pit.
Okay, so, well, we don't have to, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure the option was on the table that we discussed these, cause we had gone through all of the other ones, but we hadn't discussed, there's a couple we hadn't discussed. So we have, for instance, the, the racetrack and, and, uh, these gravel mines, one of which is, is a, is a brownfield too, um. Barlow is a brownfield, so that also gets pref- preference, cause it's a brownfield. Now, one thing about.
That's where the tannery used to dump.
Yeah. Now, one thing about gravel mines, is they're a preferred site from, provided they've been properly remediated.
Right.
In other words, if it's a mess, if it's a mess, you're not, you're not a preferred site, so we should probably add something.
But is it up to the, is it up to us to, to denote that? That.
No, it will be, it'll, it will be up to the, what I'm guessing I'm getting at is, just because you say it is, doesn't mean they, they get to start putting solar panels out on there without fixing the site.
Right.
So, um, we probably should, we should probably put a note in the plan saying, any other gravel pits are fine, provided they remediate the site. It doesn't hurt to repeat even.
That there's been proper remediation.
Cause like I said, the stuff I found that it described preferred sites was not easy to find, so why should we, if we have it, let's make it easy.
Yeah. Right. So we okay, commissioned to have them put that language in there?
But are there any, and also are there any others, if not, that's fine, that you want to specify, otherwise we can just make it a generic.
So the other red dots, where?
With regard to these areas.
Where are, yeah.
And what are those red dots?
Those are.
Gravel operations or.
Those are mapped as gravel pits from a database I got from the state, but like I said, when I looked at it, I went, I'm not sure this makes sense, cause some of these are just like sitting in the woods.
Yeah.
Maybe they're way, way old, or, there was not, there was not a lot of data in the data. Didn't, didn't get a name, it didn't see how many acres it was, it didn't say what it, whether.
See, I don't even know how they would appear, because you probably didn't need to go through any permit process, did you, twenty, thirty years ago to?
They're stuck everywhere.
Yeah.
I don't know, I.
Well, I can tell you where three, four of them are, you know, but I mean.
But did they have to, how would they appear on this map, how, how would the state know?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't. We didn't even have zoning when this was all.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So we didn't get zoning, those, four years, seventy, so seventy-two?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Seventy-two or four.
Okay, whatever, but I mean, uh.
There aren't even any roads.
Lot went on, this town from nineteen sixty-two to seventy-something, just exploded.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Gravel beds were everywhere.
Well, my basic question to you is, are any of these worth adding in, as in, in this list and on this map, and if not, then we'll just make a generic status.
Why do you say no, Jim?
I say no, because they were just gravel beds that were used cleanly and, uh, the tannery probably didn't, I know they didn't dump, I worked at the tannery at the time, so I know where they dumped. And, uh, these places, they never did. Bank of Myers.
Trying to think this up in the middle.
That, that's Pollard's right there, right? Where they were looking at the wall site.
Yeah, well, they already got a big solar site there.
Right, right.
It's already a preferred site, huh?
Uh, Terry's?
Are those in Palmer's? What is it, Fred's pointing out Palmer's, is it this one, was this, I thought this was.
Yeah, this is Palmer's, this is Terry Pollard's.
Okay, we hadn't talked about that.
That's where, that's where the well, the well site.
Well, the well site's a matter of.
Was gonna be.
They thought about it, going well there, yeah.
Where, where is this? Where's Seven's? Seven's over there, or eleven and twelve.
Seven's. Where's, where's Barbara Pond Road?
So this is here.
Okay. Huh, okay. Really? It's like behind all the houses or something.
Yeah.
It's way up there.
These could be like five acres or somebody.
So I think this is Nile School Road, maybe?
Digging some dirt in.
Yeah.
I say don't worry about those.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. Well, this sounds like an addition, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, that's.
What are you calling that?
Yeah, I don't.
That's.
Is it Pollard's?
Pollard's, that's where they were looking at the new, the new wellhead. That's the site they were trying to get.
Oh. Right. Yeah, that's just.
P O L L A R D?
Um.
P O L L E R T.
Yeah, they were for the, um, district.
Oh, the Christmas tree people?
Yeah, yeah, it's on the hill, down by the river.
Yeah, for District Two. Water's contaminated. This was one of the potential sites to dig a well to provide water.
Okay.
It is.
Okay, so we should add that as a, that'll, that's our work for you? So add as a preferred site?
Fred, is that good for a preferred site for them?
I mean, it's a.
You've been over them or not?
I've.
I stand by that.
Is it a big old gravel pit? That's a big old pit, do you feel that?
Oh, I haven't been on there in years. It was like a sand bed, I think.
Or is it?
What's down there? It's like a what?
It was a sand bed.
I think that's where he wanted to have a motorcraft trap, right?
Pollard, Pollard's has got his own motorcycle.
That's where he built it down in there. And they wouldn't let him, right? Ah, they run it for a while, I guess.
They run it for a while, he's got jumps and stuff like that, and it's close to the river or whatever, but it, it's down in the pit, it's down.
Yeah. Okay.
It's off his level, it's not level land.
So, do we add it?
I don't, so I, they never negotiated with him fairly.
No.
He threw out a price of four hundred and eighty thousand, he may see you later.
Yeah.
So, and there's no conversation.
Who's they?
Who?
Who would be the people that are running Morgan Management, the people that are running the water system, the state?
Got it.
Oh, they were looking at.
Trying to find a new well for this, uh, town.
Okay.
Which is contaminated by that.
So, you're losing me, cause you're going on stuff that I'm not sure is germanic.
Yeah.
Well, we're just, yeah.
Yes or no?
No.
No.
Anyplace else that?
Well, there's some other red dots up here. Are those?
Anything about?
Anything that has a red dot is a data.
Is, is, was shown as a gravel mine, but I'm not sure I trust the information, that's why I'm showing it.
I, to me, they're, they're pretty much the same thing. It's like they're out in the woods someplace, or.
Yeah, and unless we know for sure.
That's, that's almost in New York.
They've probably been overgrown.
Yeah.
Act two fifty, just shut all these things down.
Yeah.
So, you're going back.
Alright, so let's, you wanna just go with the ones that we have?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't see the need to add any of the other ones.
Okay, I'll, I'll modify that table according to this, you know, cause of the.
Okay.
And so you'll add the remediation language?
Yep.
Properly remediated.
We wanna save some of this town for other things besides energy, too.
What?
We wanna, we wanna save.
Yeah.
Save some of this town for other things besides energy.
I think the reason they're, they're listing them as preferred sites, is that, why disturb something?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that's basically what they're getting, they're encouraging people to say.
We're, we're close to capacity already, you know.
Yeah, yeah, well. Hey, never know. So. So. So then. You felt, then you felt certain things should be strengthened, you need to tell me exactly what, or you can, you guys can have that kind of discussion. I, I, what I was trying to say here basically is. Based on the constraints you've identified, you can't put wind basically anywhere, except for there's one little tiny spot something that showed up, but that's, I think, was way too small. I mean, there's, basically, there's wind potential up, up here, there's wind potential in a lot of different places, but.
Do you need this map?
I don't know. I'm not gonna change it right either.
So, there's wind potential.
There's just one site.
Like, this thing here, Oak Hill School.
Mm-hmm.
It's daycare, uh, child, Oak Hill Child Center. Children's, children's center.
So, this is the one?
I probably just abbreviated it.
Yeah.
Where it's, only these spots are available.
King Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prime spots for a developer. The message is pretty clear, large wind. I don't want it.
Well, it's not suitable.
Yeah, that's what, that's the way I am.
Okay.
Yeah, I had brought the, the wordage from, uh, what is it? Northwest Kingdom, Wyndham and. Uh, N B D, uh, yeah, Northwest Kingdom, where did I email it to then? Wyndham and Northwest Region.
Their citing language?
What their, yeah, their citing language. I can email it to you guys, so you can see it.
Sure.
You'd, you'd probably see another draft before you make a decision, but I can make these other changes, yeah.
So, back to Michael's question about strengthening certain things.
Yeah.
What suggestions do we have for him?
Well, Michelle, I looked at the, at your email.
Yeah.
And compared it to, uh, the May fifteenth.
Okay.
And it looked to me like all of those had been incorporated, all of your changes had been incorporated.
Well, I went to, the one, well, it's supposed to take out the word utility, which was, was still in the copy, I may, I may have been looking at an older copy, so was taking out the, the word utili-, that's what I said, I'm, I'm like, not sure if these need to be in here or not, um, was taking that out.
Yeah.
And then, you had a table, when, just before this, with the wind, where it was showing the size of the tower, just for.
Who are you talking about, I don't know.
Um, and there was a section, so I had residential commercial that had utility.
Yes. It was just telling, describing the sizes.
Um. Okay, oh, that's, that's what I just wanted to make sure, cause I know that we had talked about not tying to the grid, which, that's why I wanted to take the word utility out of that one today.
Good. Yeah, this was.
So, where, where is that section?
Yeah, this.
Um, uh, the page, page one of the energy section was like the second dot thing down, it said, um, residential commercial and utility.
This was a.
Oh, re- that's. Oh, utility scale, huh?
Scale, huh, okay.
What, what's the objection for utility?
That's what I was just talking about, closing the loopholes of using, like, a word like that, where somebody comes in and.
Utility. Utility scale, huh?
We were sort of saying, we, we didn't want inertial. Winds.
Residential and commercial scale wind turbines to provide electricity for residential and commercial?
And commercial uses.
Is that?
That's the dot.
Okay, to, well, the one that I, the copy I was looking at on my computer, it's, the word utility was in there. Um, wait, hold on, wait, I printed it, it's free.
Utility scale.
I thought ahead, hold on.
So, Megan, Megan?
Yes.
So, this is a map of potential wind resources.
Yes.
The red are areas that have no constraints.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you see where it crossed it out there?
This color here. Are where you could put utility scale.
Yeah, it's crossed, it's not, you know, the.
Okay. So you have a boatload of potential for wind in panel. However, you don't have anything that doesn't have a constraint. Have one type, except for a little bitty area up in here.
Yeah.
But you, this is.
And the constraints.
That's all the reds.
Cause it's hundreds and hundreds, and it's probably in the national park. And the same for the conics, the conics have large, large.
It's just the conics, yeah.
You're not gonna be able to put utility scale wind and make any money off it in the valley.
Yeah.
Well, I have a question. The biggest constraint is the distance to, to housing, right?
Yeah.
So, the puck wants us to say. You can't put commercial wind towers up there, so you really shouldn't put anything else up there either.
You basically already say that with your forest district.
Yeah.
In anything that's impacted in the forest district. But how about anywhere else on that map?
Yeah.
I think it's a real stretch to say no to wind and then no to anything else, because the puck allows us this thousand meter or ten thousand meter, whatever it is, distance. Now, that's not gonna impact another commercial venture. I don't know how we get around that.
No. Well, that might be a little bit of a flaw. But, but you might not.
Doesn't that come in with Act two fifty, though?
No, Act two fifty has nothing to do with it.
No, okay, I'm just saying about, you know, the height and your, your, you're talking about wind?
No.
Oh, yeah.
I'm talking about wind.
And, and there's spaghetti lots in, uh, Stottolus with the mountains.
Right. But, but.
Trying to build lots like this.
But the, the Public Utilities Commission wants us to s- just not say no to wind and solar. They wanna say, if you're not gonna allow that up there, then you're not gonna build that warehouse up there either. You're not gonna have a, this building up there, uh, that's gonna house this or produce this.
Or a cell, yeah, a cell tower.
A cell tower.
So, how do we get around that? The biggest constraint with wind, and I think this is how we get around it, is that that distance. Probably does not apply to other businesses and ventures and commercial buildings. Why would it?
It's a template, right? Right, it would only apply to the wind, not to businesses.
Right.
But he's saying it would apply.
Because of the.
No, I didn't say it would apply to other things. No, it wouldn't, no, I agree, that, that may, that may be a, that may be a bit of a flaw.
Oh. Oh, okay, that's our way around that. Okay.
That may be a flaw in the, in, in the argument. You're basically relying on the mapping of constraints that were done for this, and you're met, you're, the additional constraint that B C R C added based on public hearings. That there shouldn't be anything within a thousand feet of residence.
Correct.
And so, you're right, somebody could come back and say, well, that doesn't apply to wind, but so far, I don't know, I don't know.
If they're gonna deny my wind thing up here, then you can't build this other thing here either.
Yeah, I don't really know how to get around that flaw, to say.
Well, maybe we let it go with winds.
We don't want anything that has any kind of constraint whatsoever.
Okay.
And, and the, the utility scale wind, where it's appropriate, is constrained by the unfragmented farms.
Yeah, it's.
Right.
Cause it's conservation land, isn't it?
Now, I did, did, I, 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 one thing I did not do here, because as I, the more I thought of it, the more it twisted my brain. So you guys have to help me. You wanted to allow.
Right.
Commercial or re- residential scale, as long it was, as it wasn't on the grid. And the reason that twisted my brain is like, well, you sure you wanna do that? And second, I don't think the P U C has any authority over stuff that's not connected with the grid.
Probably not.
But you would, so are you gonna develop standards in your bylaws? On that, and so, I didn't say any, I didn't put that in there.
So, an example, an example would be if, if Mac Moling, a new business moves into that building, and they wanna put up three wind turbines.
That are.
For their own power. That's a commercial use.
That are on the. Right.
They have no intent to sell it to the grid, nor would it be allowed without. Uh, according to our plan.
The height restriction.
So, what can of worms do you think we're opening by putting that language in there, referring to commercial?
Well, I just was, I, I guess somehow the, it seemed a bit of a conflict, I just wanted to make sure I was getting what you wanted in there correctly, because you're basically, basically saying we don't. You really don't want wind anywhere, you're really not keen on it. You're willing to have it, if it doesn't attach to the grid, which is gonna be pretty limiting, but then you're gonna have to regulate that.
Right.
Because the P U C would, because it's not attached to the grid.
So, somewhere in the bylaws, there's gotta be, as part of the permit process to put these things in, has to be regulated by the bylaws, and then.
Just, just want, want farm people to be able to, you know, power something.
Well, let's go back to gardeners. Gardens is the only place that has a wind. If, if they had a little extra, could it go in the grid? I mean, if they had enough to run their farm, so to speak, and there was some extra, and they could make a buck on it, could that go in there now?
Yeah. That metering kind of thing?
We have, well, we have, we have everything here.
But then that's the can of worms that you open, and then a bigger outfit comes in and says, well, you're allowing them to sell to the grid.
Yeah. Right.
And now, we think we oughta have a crack at it too. So, I agree, with this grid thing.
As soon as that happens, as soon as that happens, you're done.
You're done, and you've opened it up for everybody.
Having a.
Yeah.
And you can throw all of the restrictions we're putting in here away, so.
The biomass, you can use that gardener's, as to try and put that thing in the racetrack. That was, they, they had already been done to you, with, with gardener's wind, yes.
But then we would have to say, in the bylaws or zoning laws, somewhere, the, the restrictions that we wanted on non-grid linked wind. Right? So we'd have to say, the, the sound that you can generate from your turbine in your backyard can only be X.
Be certain decibel.
Or it can only be this high.
Yeah, the decibel level changed a lot. The states changed the decibel level to, it's almost.
No, but I'm saying.
Yeah.
We would, we would, if, if P U C isn't going to regulate it, then the town of Powell would have to say what the restrictions were. It can only be this high, it can only be this big, it can only generate this much.
So, we could. Right.
Produce this many decibels.
Could also maybe distance, like, how many within an area, like when we were talking about with the solar, limiting the size of solar by acreage or something.
Right. Or if you have neighbors within.
Yeah, neighbors, yeah.
Yeah.
A thousand, a thousand feet, then you have to get their permission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And have you, you have hyper farmers, and might have something to do with the property law, and if the thing falls down, it's gonna only fall on your property, you know, you know, so there's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of, it's like a cell tower.
So, we would have to write those restrictions, we would have to write those regulations. Not we, but.
But for tonight, do we allow the language that Michael's questioning to stand regarding?
The grid?
The term, commercial, and no sale to the grid?
I was basically gonna be silent on it. But I could, it might be a good question for me to talk to the P U C and make sure I'm understanding what they're saying. It just seems like we're getting into funky territory, when basically those towns that don't want wind have basically done what you did, and said, you know, you don't think it's appropriate. They haven't gotten, they haven't split those many hairs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, again, it gets into, I don't know what happens if someone were to build a tower that you regulated, and then they start selling it to the grid, then, then does it somehow conflict with the plan and?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you these three that have already been certified, so if I be able to pick something out there, too.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Good. That would be great. Okay.
So, that's.
Would you be able to tell if a plane is certified? Cause there's a couple others, two, I just don't know if the, I, I knew that the three or.
Calls down. Or I can call a regional commission, I'll just call a.
Okay, I know, I, I have three that I know are certified, and I have had three others that I just, I know is in the process, I just don't know if they've been.
Okay.
Certified with the new criteria?
Certified. Yeah.
For energy?
Yeah, there, there've been a couple that went to the P, towns that went to the P U C directly, because they were ahead of the regional commission, and as far as I can know, they were turned down. I forget what tax they were. Cause I looked at the hearing record on that.
Right.
They were unhappy with it, for some reason. I didn't read the plan, but, um, um, we can find out.
That'd be great.
We have to.
We agree, yeah.
That'd be great if you could talk to them about that, and about also the, how do we get around this issue with prohibiting other businesses and ventures, if we say no to wind?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Otherwise, are these changes okay? Or do you wanna look at it some more and? And get back to me, or what else do you wanna? This is all I really wanna go over, is make sure we're all clear on the changes.
Can you send out a, can you send out a new email with that, just so, cause apparently I, I was looking at something a little bit older, cause.
Well, one of them looks like it runs since June fifteen, that's what I'm looking at.
Alright, cause you said you didn't have and utility scale wind on yours, yeah, so.
Yeah, no. On May fifteenth.
Oh, I have June fifteen. This is, okay, that's, that's why, so it was added in, alright.
Which means. That's on paper, but you kept forgetting on vacation.
Yeah.
Residential, commercial, and utility scale wind turbines.
Things change so fast.
Hmm.
Poten- this is this potential renewable, which is include, which it does, includes residential, commercial, utility scale wind. That is a potential, but that's all it's getting at. It does exist as a potential.
Okay.
Cause we have to talk about what's potential.
Potential, potential, okay, that's why, yeah, I just was like, alright, alright.
Yeah, no, but we have to say, what, what are the potential resources?
Say it's a potential. It's potential.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. No, that's fine, then.[1460.14]
Okay, so Michael's question is, is these changes fine, or do we need more time to look at this?
Yeah.
I think the more we look, the more we get confused.
I think they're fine.
That's where we're good.
We're there for good.
You okay?
Yeah, he'll just, he'll just check what, what we're just talking about.
Alright, so without a motion, the consensus is go ahead and change that.
Okay.
Cause ultimately we'll vote on finished product anyway.
So the next one I will give you will not track all these changes.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other changes I make, I won't tell you about.
Just keep us in the dark, towards the mushroom treatment area.
Keep, keep you unplugged, keep you off the grid.
That's right, off the grid.
The lights start to flicker a little.
Okay.
Right.
Anything else you wanna talk about, energy wise, before we turn Barbara loose here?
Oh, Barbara.
Oh, yeah, let's turn Barbara loose.
Okay, well, um, everybody got, yeah, everybody got a copy of this, um, standards for municipal plans and it's, um, a checklist, um, that, uh, just is sort of a guide, um, for us to go through the plan and see whether or not we've actually done what the law requires for these kinds of plans. Um, and it also, um, states what the plant, what the, what the law is, the elements of, that, um, um, the law requires, so that was sort of interesting for me, um.
Can I just, I'm gonna just interrupt you just for a little bit, cause I, I, Mike and I were talking about this the other day and I think, I think it confused him, so it might confuse you all.
Yeah.
So you're amending your plan.
Yeah.
And in amending the plan, there probably are a few other parts of the plan in the, like the table contents and things like that, so.
Sure.
So you're making this amended. You will have to hold, hold public hearings on those. So, select board will have, I mean, the county commission will have a public hearing, you only require to have one. Do you have a public hearing, decide to make changes or not after that?
And that public hearing will be on the energy section?
Yes.
Just on the energy of the amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah, primarily, yeah, like I said, though, there may be a tweak here or there, like for instance, all the maps aren't listed, I mean, but it'll be what's primarily, so you have a public hearing, get public comments, you do the whole thing you've always done, you send it around to surrounding towns and all that. So then you decide if there are any other changes you wanna make, let's say you, you, let's say you finalize it, you then send that to the select board, the select board has two public hearings. Select board adopts the revised plan, then that goes to the regional commission. The regional commission has a public hearing on whether or not to confirm the plan, that's a, uh, in statute about confirming a plan.
Which we just did.
Which she just did. Um, I don't see any reason why they wouldn't confirm the plan, cause it meets all the statutory requirements. They then also have a hearing on whether to certify it. That's a different question, so that's what that's about.
So as long as.
Whether it's certifiable.
So this, this report card makes it certifiable.
Yeah, and that's.
They could say, okay, you could do everything you were supposed to do, you got a plan, but we're not certifying it because you didn't meet these fourteen points.
Exactly, they could, they could do that, they could do that.
So somebody up there is gonna go through their own version of the fourteen points, or Barbara's written version of it.
Well, I, I think if you, I think the best thing to do is provide that to them and then that makes it more persuasive for them to, so.
Okay.
And then this has to be in order for BCRC to confirm it as well.
I'm sorry?
This has to be in order for the BCRC to confirm.
Yes.
Right.
Well, it's a certify, certification's a different process. Confirmation specifically doesn't meet the statutory requirement.
To certify. So do them same.
I know, one's sort of a Catholic thing and the other one's a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so the first question is, has it been, um, duly adopted and approved? And I'm assuming that it will be, um, um, then, uh, it asks for consistency with state goals and policy requirements, um, which are, uh, greenhouse reduction goals, the twenty by twenty-five goal, uh, building efficiency goals, uh, state energy policy, um, uh, that are citing and development, uh, issues and, uh, renewable generation energy transformation categories. So, um, the first section, um, oh, the question number three is, does the plan contain an energy element? Yes, it does. Um, and then the question four is, does the plan's energy element contain an analysis of resources, needs, scarcity, costs and problems across all energy sectors? And ours does, um, mainly, I think, uh, we can point to the tables that were generated.
Right.
Uh, does the plan contain an analysis that addresses A through E below? And, uh, we can say yes to that because, uh, we depended on the regional planning commission for those. And we can list where we can find them in our plan. And then, uh, number six is, does your plan's energy element contain a statement of policy on the conservation and efficient use of energy? Yes, it does. And those, um, elements are, um, the ones that are stated earlier in the.
Number two.
Act one seventy-four.
Okay.
Um, does the energy plan element contain a statement of policy on reducing transportation energy demand and single occupancy vehicles? Yes, it does. And then there are elements about that, which we have taken care of. Does the plan's energy element contain a statement of policy on patterns and density of land use? Yes, it does. Uh, does the plan's energy element contain a statement of policy on the development and citing of renewable energy resources? And this one, I was sort of stymied and so Mike and I talked about it. And, um, we actually don't have a statement in the citing section, um, of eight point four, which is the mapping standards. But if we go over to, um, four point four. Uh, panel energy goal number four on page eighty-one, um, does describe what we want, to identify suitable areas of wind, solar, biomass, hydroelectric generation while protecting natural resources. So if we want a stronger statement to put in energy citing eight point four, I would suggest that we take energy goal four and just reword it, put it in the beginning, yeah.
Put it in the beginning.
But I think, I think we're covered because we do have a statement in goal four, so.
Or we could just refer to that section in the report card.
Yeah, right, right.
Sure.
Right. Um.
Either way.
And then there's a discussion of our questions about mapping standards and since we have used, uh, the regional planning commission's maps, um, we're good on those, particularly since the regional, um, plan has been approved, confirmed, certified, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, and, and we can actually go through each of those and specify where, uh, we have them in our plan. Um, and then number fourteen, um, is, um, municipality seeking a determination of energy compliance from the department and not using their regions maps only, and we can just check yes, that we've, we've taken care of that. So, it looks to me like we can say in affirmative that we have taken care of each of those criteria.
Good, as long as that is clear.
Excellent, good work.
Good work, Michael.
Yeah.
But we need to, we'll need to submit that to the commission. In a readable form.
Along, along with the plan.
Ca- can I have a clean copy?
Oh, definitely. Have you emailed it or?
Yeah, emailed, it's fine.
And when you dust that clean copy off, could you copy all the rest of us?
Okay, so we're good to go.
Any questions on the fourteen points? Right.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, much appreciated.
Thank you. Cross eyed. Actually, it was, um, sort of a revisitation to what I used to do, it was kind of nostalgic. Believe it or not.
Walk down the memory lane, alright? Um, okay. Michael, anything else?
No, that's done.
Okay, let's, um, let's just, let's, um, how close are we to, um, public hearings? In your mind?
Oh, well, I could get you something in the next, by the next meeting.
So the next meeting, we could look at a
Yeah.
quasi-finished version and determine whether we announce public hearings, which would more than likely be sometime in October. And we should have an amended plan sometime after the first of the year. First quarter, hopefully. I know, I know, don't.
Everything takes longer than.
Don't forget, Mr. Walker's here to help us move things along with the select board, so.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Big time.
Yeah. Alright, very good. If there, if there's nothing else about.
I'll, 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 I'll tell you, one possible flying element of, of all this would be that, um, which you'll, you might think is almost funny, is that if you get village designation, then next time you have a plan, you have to show the village designation. So for some reason, village designation happened, all this is going on, we would have to add maps of the village designated village.
Before this is approved? To the whole town plan?
Yes.
So we would have to amend the maps of the town plan and the energy section of the town plan.
Yes, and so, so for instance, let's say that occurred between the time you have a hearing and the time the select board has a hearing, then the select board should make sure that's all.
I have no problem with that. We can do it two further.
Yeah, I'm just saying that. Oh, it would change major numbers and do a bunch of weird stuff.
It may happen at the same time.
Sorry.
Ford, say that again. Well, like, if, if you're, if, if you have designated villages, they should be in the town plan.
Right.
If you're applying for village designation, so you don't have any designated villages, so they're not in there yet. However, since we're amending the plan, if that designation were to get approved tomorrow, then we should, and we're now amending the plan, we should show them, so we, that would be another change
We should amend to reflect that.
in a totally different part of the plan, has nothing to do with energy, um, or not, not part of the energy section, it's just something that they want in the town plan, so. So if, for instance, another way of looking at it is if you, five years from now, when you do your town plan, you didn't change anything, you just re-adopted it,
Only worse.
you'd have to put the village designation, you have to change something. Or it would be confirmed.
Okay. Alright, well, we'll, we'll cross that bridge, we'll, we'll see what happens in one order and.
Yeah.
No problem adding to maps and letting people know that there are two amendments that were trying to get approved here.
Yeah, it's not really a substantive amendment, so it shouldn't be a big deal, but, but like I said, everyone's.
No. So, uh, C here is, uh, about municipal planning grants and the deadline is in September thirtieth, what, September?
Hmm?
I forget exactly what date it's.
It's really like October first, or basically, yeah, it is September.
Okay, so end of September, you have to have everything done. Now, the, the reason to consider municipal planning grants is because we're doing a tremendous amount of municipal planning, to state the obvious. The real work is just beginning, as I've stated many times, you know, the passing of the town plan was one major hurdle, but now comes that, all the work, uh, changing of the bylaw and things like that. Um, we will probably need help doing that. And in, in needing that help, um, it's always better if there's a grant in place. I think the town would appreciate it if we had a grant in place, rather than just go with our hat in hand and ask the select board for more money to continue, uh, our relationship with BCRC or whomever. Um, so I asked Shannon to add municipal planning grant to this. I'm not a grant writer. I'm not even sure, I, I think I just kind of did a capsule version of why we need a grant because of the changes, the sweeping changes we're making or could ultimately make in, um, in the rest of our, um, our zoning bylaw and subdivision regulation, things like that. Any comments? Anybody have anything, uh, they wanna add to that? Am I missing something?
What number are we looking at?
Well, there, I mean, what are the, the maximums? If I recall, maximums are, uh, twenty, just, let, let's just use that term. I think we applied for twenty before and we wound up getting twelve the last time, if I recall. I say that we apply for whatever we can, the town has to match part of it, I believe, Michael?
It's twenty-two thousand.
Ten percent. Twenty-two is?
Twenty-two thousand.
Limit?
Right.
And how much has to come from the town?
Oh.
Ten, ten percent. Ten percent of it?
Maybe eighty, twenty? Eighty-five.
So twenty percent.
No, it's ten, it's ten percent.
Is it ten percent?
So ninety, ten.
Oh, they did that, okay.
Okay, alright. Well, is there any?
It's the same one that I read.
Okay, well, and that all sounds familiar when I looked at it several years ago, Michael, too.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we should pursue it. Can I work with you on that?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Um, and if anyone has suggested wording for the actual grant, be open to that, although you may have something in mind as well.
Well, there's, there's a document that are, a list of questions.
Okay.
And you should start from there, cause that's basically what you're gonna put on.
Right. You're looking at, at a site with all this information?
No, I'm looking, I'm looking on my computer, and there's a series of application questions, it's like applicant municipality, um, when, when's your most recent plan adoption date? It's just basic stuff. And then it goes into finally, you know, what are you applying for, what do you wanna do?
Okay.
And then what purpose, this is a good starting point, and then you end up going to an online system and you put all this stuff online.
Can you get me that, or tell me where you got it? I'll, you just went to, you clicked on Vermont Municipal Planning Grants and it.
Yeah, I, I can, I can send you all this stuff, cause I'm working on one for a totally different project.
Got you started? Yeah, if you would.
Were there a big chunk of dough in there for printing?
I believe.
Wait, wait, it was quite a bit of money.
I believe.
So one new.
We need to print a lot of paper.
So it.
There's a couple of new little wrinkles in the way they're doing this stuff now.
Wait, Mike, can you hang on for a second? So, I, I'd have to check on that. I, I don't know how that's been used or not used.
Oh, sure. Mm-hmm.
Julie would know that.
Right.
Yeah. Like there was.
But there was a big chunk in anticipated printing costs.
Oh, there was.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And legal notices to the newspaper, it was just layered, but there was financially a big number there, of the amount of money.
Yeah. Okay. So when you bump in or were you asking that? I will if I'm up here, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mike?
Okay. We just, Michael, what Jim's referring to is when we, when we submitted our budget either this year or the past year to the select board in anticipation of the, the, uh, the, the new plan being certified, we wanted extra money in there for printing costs and everything associated with it. I don't know how it's been used, not, or not used. I know we have some copies, you know?
His money was clear, more or less, you know?
His money was clear, yeah, so we just need an accounting. We need to see if there's still some money there.
Right. But. Right, there, there you go.
Okay, that's all.
Well, you have to put in a match, so you can always just pay for those uses you matched to.
Sure, okay.
Cause you're gonna, you're not gonna get away, and the match has to be money, it can't be time.
Okay.
So, the application is different than last time and there's one major, I don't know, maybe it's two major wrinkles. So, um, one is that you need to have somebody who has, knows something about planning, work, help you with your application. They wanna know that at some point, a regional plan, it could be regional by the commission or whatever, they wanna know that you've identified a planning process that makes sense. Second is, if you're up to ten thousand dollars, you do not have to go to bid, but you have to get at least some kind of cost estimate from two different sources. If you're above twenty thousand, you gotta go to bid. So you can't just hire the, our, the BCRC to, to this one.
Right, I remember that.
We would have to bid or, or whatever, so.
We don't have to take the low bidder, though.
You don't have to do, no, you just have to.
We just have to have a reason for.
But you, the bidding processes, you know, you have to go through the bidding process, so, um, yeah. It depends on what you wanna do. I assume you're thinking about bylaw changes.
No, I, there are a lot of changes that, I mean, and, and just reading through the plan, at the end of each section is
Okay.
reference a bylaw that needs to be changed, and I, I don't think that's necessarily gonna be a walk in the park.
No, no, but I mean, that, your, your application would be for that, I mean.
Alright. I mean, it could im- impact even, I have to study it tomorrow, but it could impact subdivision regulations as well.
Well, they, they have like a list of what they could consider project types to do, town plans, zoning and subdivision bylaws, planning for state designated areas, infrastructure capital improvement planning, natural resource planning, flood resilience planning or others, so those.
Economic development.
Ones, yeah, tho- those are the, the ones that they've listed are probably the ones that they're kinda directing people to.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, economic development could be something, um.
If I remember Mike correctly, you gotta be ready to go.
Shovel ready.
Shovel ready, thank you.
Yeah, there it is.
You gotta be ready to pull the trigger on something. That's, that's why I, I watched the webinar and I kinda, no, I didn't know that we had anything that was in the pipeline that fast, so.
So, um, and I'll, I don't know if I can clarify this for you now, because I had a long conversation with somebody from the department about this, about the going to bid. And I said, well, how do you go to bid if you don't have money? And they said, well, you get the grant and then you go to bid, and I'm like, well, we're kidding. How do you know how much it's gonna cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was kind of a, I don't think they quite undercar, understood. I mean, when I worked in the private sector, there were two ways of doing it, you could go to bid or, a- and in which case you, whoever got the low bid, or, or someone basically said, we have twenty thousand dollars and this is what we want done, do it or don't. You know, and you could do what you could for twenty thousand dollars, so, um, yeah, I'm not, but, but the bidding issues, then that's new and that, that, that does complicate things.
So are you, so you. So you're saying if we, if we go for something a little less than twenty thousand dollars, we don't have to do that?
We don't have to, then we can use.
Less than ten thousand dollars, okay.
Yeah. I don't think you can amend your bylaws for less than ten thousand.
I know, that's my issue, I think we gotta, we're just gonna have to, we're gonna have to fight the bullet and go through the process.
Yeah. So, for scared of it.
And I think we did last time and that, that's why we had landworks and.
Yeah. What, what do we give landlords?
What's that?
Landlords, what do we pay them for that much?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. That, that was, I think, disputed.
I know.
And rightfully so.
Money's gone.
Money's gone.
Mike came on board, thank God. Somebody, we were in trouble.
Did it for almost free. No, okay.
No.
But I mean, we were in trouble.
So do, do you write the bylaws? No.
We, we were going to propose changes in our bylaws. What you're trying to do is you're trying to bring your bylaws up to speed with the new town plan, the vision for the town, wherever you can.
Right.
Doesn't have to be in every single area, no town plan is exactly, uh, aligned with a town's bylaws, but you try and get it as close as you can. As you, as you read through our town plan, you'll see in each section, there is, um, a goal, there's a state goal, our goal, and then action plans, and the action plans are to change a lot of the bylaws. But bylaws, but I mean also the formation of energy committee, formation of an economic development committee. You know, who's gonna, who's gonna man those, um, how are those going to work? Um, there are best practices around the state that, uh, a good consultant will know and understand. We need a lot of help and when, when you start to change these bylaws, you have to go through that process, so, you know, when do you have the first wave of public hearings? After you change three bylaws? Or do you go through and change all the bylaws and then that you need changing, that this commission feels that we need changing? And then you go to public hearing. Um, I mean, at one point, our town plan, we were gonna almost do like fifty-fifty, remember? We were gonna go to have hearings on with it not even being completed. Um, just to get some, I think to try and get the energy section through to give us more deference, if I recall.
Um, you had to do the whole thing.
And then we, yeah, I mean, then there was no fooling around with that, that was a, that thought quickly passed.
But you could do the bylaws in sections, you could do it over two years, I think that might be something to talk about with your application. Bylaws in section, you could do it over two years. I think that might be something to talk about with your application, with this maybe a multi-year one.
Well, I guess we, the task-
Because you can always go back to-
The task ahead of us is to figure out how much really has to be changed.
Yeah.
You know?
Right.
Well, not that that's always gonna just leap right out at us, but I mean, we could all start studying that, those sections and say, oh my God, you know, as Michael and I are working on the grant with your help, you know, we're gonna change fifteen bylaws in these twelve different sections. That will be hard. That will be labor intensive. And then the public hearings for those will be intense as well. Now, we've done changes before when I sat on this commission, and I thought were pretty sweeping changes. And not a single person showed up at any, any of the hearings. But, you know, if history repeats itself, you look at the interest in just the town plan, there are gonna be a lot of people that are gonna be very interested in how we're changing the bylaws to reflect this town plan. So I think we're gonna need a lot of help.
Need a lot of help, but it's foolish to think that we'll all be here in this group as one in a couple of years.
You're gonna be there.
And if they're not, I'm not gonna be there. But I mean, consensus is the name of the game.
Well, you're absolutely right.
And it took us a long time switching gears with different people until Mike came on board. I think he's kept us on a-
Yeah, on a track.
Straight course.
Yeah, that's right.
Until then, we were just bouncing around back and forth, back and forth.
Well, and, and any planning commission in the future can change the work of a planning commission in the past, too. I mean, they don't need any reason other than a motion.
We talk more about the past here than we do anything. All the wrongs that have been done, we've tried to right and, uh,
We should be experts by now, right?
Ex- per-.
You have to time yourself and need a select board resolution.
We do need a select board.
As far as the application.
Okay, so we gotta get moving on the-
You gotta get all the application, municipal pentagram. Well, I mean, just can't wait till September thirtieth.
Well, okay, here's our-
Well, fortunately, you know, Michael ought to be able to get the resolution on the select board.
Where, where can we get a copy of the old bylaws to use as a guideline for starting to look?
You don't have a, as a distinguished member of this planning commission, you don't have this one? Well, you can use mine if you'd like.
I think, I think I have that at that. I just wanted to make sure that this is what, this is what I should be looking at, okay?
Okay. Yeah, that's most up to date. I, I'll get you an extra. And I think it's, I think they're online, aren't they? Aren't they on the website, our bylaws?
I don't know.
Although if they're not, I'll definitely will get you one. They're, no, no, I get it. I always like to have that, the, the copies. Anything else?
I think it's online, maybe not be the two thousand eleven update, it might be the year before, for some reason.
Oh.
Yeah.
You remember, I gave you a copy, not this one. I gave you a copy and you went back and found, you guys found a newer copy.
Yeah, yeah.
Than the planning commission chairman gave you for your work.
No, you had the newer copy. The one we had in the office was the old one. So we didn't know it had been amended.
Yeah, we had a person there that kept saying, I gave them a copy, I gave them a copy. I remember that.
Yeah.
All right, shall we move on? We only have a couple more items. Yeah, please.
Let's get going here, Slattery, for good luck.
Thank you, Michael.
Do you want this map print or do you just roll it up on?
I'll just roll it.
All right. So the mail, uh- Oh, go ahead.
I'm gonna send all my map changes to Michael on C C U. I'll just say, because then I'm like-
I'm just gonna send you new photos.
Some other people, but you sent me another one and I'm like, did I send that to somebody?
Yeah, okay, that's easier, yeah. He's, he's the man. But I'll, I'll take a couple extra pictures of the darned photos.
Okay, just, uh, real quick in the mail, Bill Barney at, uh, twenty-one sixteen Howard Hill, uh, and says in Bennington, um, got his wastewater system and potable water supply permit from the state. Passing around, anybody take a look? And then now the B C R C, Mr. Sullivan addressed a letter to Michael Slattery, Chair of Pono Planning Commission, Dear Michael, July twenty-six eighteen, following a public hearing, the Bennington County Regional Commission approved the town plan and confirmed the planning process for the town of Ponam on performance with twenty-four V S A. Section forty-three fifty, the commission appreciates all the hard work by the planning commission and the select board to prepare and adopt a new plan. The commission also fully supports the application of the town for village center designations as stated in the plan. And then they just, the section in, he quotes the section of our plan. Will be happy to continue to support your application and work with you in implementing your new town plan sincerely, Jim Sullivan, Director, B C R C. So I thought that was pretty neat, if anybody liked that. The only other piece of mail worth mentioning is that the Vermont League of Cities and Towns has its two-day town fair up in South Burlington. It's October third and fourth. I don't know what days those fall on. Um, but if I'm here, Michael's going, um, probably wouldn't be bad to- Oh, perfect. It probably, it probably wouldn't be bad to go to some or all of that. So I'll pass that around, but I'd like it back. And then, you okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's this town, huh? If, um, if when everybody has a look at those, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second it.
For second half, if there's any further discussion, now's the time to do it. If not, all those in favor of saying goodnight, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you Barbara for your good work on that. Michael, thank you.